Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Council to order. We do have a quorum. I'd ask that you make sure your cellphones are silenced, please. Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith?
Our heavenly Father, we humbly come before thee this night to thank thee for thy many blessings. We are grateful for the moisture that we have received and pray that we may continue to receive more. We ask for a special blessing upon all of our emergency responders and first responders, and ask thy blessings of protection to be upon them as they serve our community. We're thankful for the opportunity to gather tonight as a council and to discuss things of importance for our community. We invite thy spirit to be with us in the decisions that are made. And we pray for thy blessings upon this community and our residents, to protect them from any possible fires or hazards that might come from this drought, that we pray that we'll be relieved at some point in the near future. We are grateful for the opportunity to live in this free land, and pray for thy blessings upon our nation's leaders, that they'll be able to make the best decisions for our country. Let me say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Keith. Item B on our agenda is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up and called to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during call to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. We've got two individuals who'd like to speak to us. Larry McCormick?
Good evening, everyone. Larry McCormick, live in the county. Over the, I've lived here approximately eight years now, and over about the last two to three weeks, there's been a noticeable uptick in police presence up and down the 260. And I'd like to applaud whoever, whatever brought that about. I think it's a great thing. Obviously, everybody that drives the town, especially on, on the 260, knows that, that the speed limits are abused quite easily. So, in, you know, in the past, I think it was last Labor Day, there was a fatality accident on the 260. And anyway, I just want to applaud the overall presence of police and hope it continues throughout the summer when we're invaded by the large numbers of part-timers that come up. And hopefully, that will be much safer for the old guys like me driving out there. So, again, thank you, and it's nice to be able to say something positive for once. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We do appreciate that. Chief, would you please pass that on to all of your honors? Kenny Cale?
Hello, Mayor Irwin, members of the town council, the youth council, and the town employees. Thank you for this opportunity to address you, as I'm not a citizen of the town and sometime I wish to be. This clearly means that I have ideas and desires about annexation. I have been a community, in, in this community since 1969, before it became a town. I daily travel to the park. I was one of the first to write letters to the editor about our need as a town for a park. We initially faced uninformed opposition from the forestry department, which a not-so-public apology had to be written. I've addressed the council by letter and through letters to the editor concerning the danger of our voting machines, because the only complete source of voting tallies comes from such machines. A system of full observable hand counts with a machine count could only add to the safety of our system of democracy. This is an issue that was unanimously approved at our Arizona Town Hall held over in Cholo. Towns in Navajo County should push to abolish the practice of bundling votes totals, which could make it hard to see vote manipulation, and return to reporting by polling place. A top elected official who has a daughter with a voting machine patent in China is a concern, no matter which side of the political spectrum you sit on. Nature-based tourism, affordable housing, a dog park, road improvement are town issues that I want to be part of. Working with Mayor Irwin and utilizing state funding sources such as the tax credit program for our schools and for nonprofits such as Camp Tadier are a great idea. Creating opportunity for purpose in our youth through pickleball is a national and perhaps a worldwide focal point of mine. The biggest hurdle that I have found is miscommunication, compounded by resistance to open discussion. To overcome this, we'll need to have available time. Whatever your position on any of these topics, it can be addressed and improved through civil discussions in this time of division. I am requesting that the town council form a dog park committee of community members, a town staff, and town council representatives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kenny. Thank you for your passion. Item C on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda are considered in their normal sequence as listed unless called out of sequence. We have two items on our agenda, our consent agenda tonight. Are there any questions from the council? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff, excuse me, or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation, Week of the Young Child. Counselor Phillips?
Proclamation, Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Office of Mayor Stephanie Irwin, Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th, 2025. Whereas the first things first Navajo, Apache Regional Partnership Council and local partner organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, will be celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th, 2025. And whereas these organizations are working to improve all learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and a building, and building a foundation of learning for everyone in Navajo and Apache counties, and whereas all young children and their families in the state of Arizona and Navajo and Apache counties deserve access to high-quality early childhood education, and whereas public policies and programs that support early learning for all young children are critical to young children's futures and the success of our community, and whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children and families in Navajo and Apache counties in Arizona deserve thanks and recognition. Now therefore, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, does hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through 11th, 2025, as Week of the Young Child in Navajo and Apache counties, and encourage all community partners to work together to make good investments in early childhood health and development. In witness where, whereof, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor, has hereunto set her hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at Town Hall this third day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Item D2 on our agenda tonight is proclamation of National Library Week. Counselor Turner?
This is a proclamation from the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, from the office of the mayor, Stephanie Irwin, for National Library Week, April 6th through 12th, 2025. Whereas, in 1930, the Lakeside Public Library was founded. In 1985, the library became a part of the town. It is look, it is housed in the Larson Memorial Building, named after the founder, William H., excuse me, Wallace H. Lawson. And whereas, the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Public Library currently has 22,356 patrons, and has several programs that include a variety of interests for all ages. And whereas, library, libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning. And whereas, libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the population they serve, and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas, libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And whereas, libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And now therefore, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, does provide, hereby proclaim, April 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Library Week in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. During this week, the mayor encourages all residents to visit the library to explore the wealth of resources that are available. In witness thereof, Mayor Stephanie Irwin has hereunto to set her hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at Town Hall this third day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Turner. And I would just like to recognize our library director, Betsy Peck, and all the great things that she does at the library. We'll get this proclamation. Maybe you can put it someplace in the library. So, thank you, Counselor Turner. Item D3 on our agenda is an update from Trax. President Steve Dobbs, come on up.
Okay. Well, thanks you guys for having me here. Just ought to give a little report on what we've been up to in the last year. Trax has nearly 700 members. In 2024, our trail crew contributed 3,200 hours maintaining our trail system. We had 190 volunteers assist the Tour of the White Mountains Bike Race, which happens every October, and we had 20 members serve as course marshals for Zia Rides, a inaugural gravel event in September. In total, our members logged nearly 9,000 volunteer hours beyond the trail work that we just talked about. Thanks to a Navajo County grant, we partnered with Big Loop Trails out of Dolores, Colorado, to build a three-and-a-quarter-mile lumberjack trail, which forms a five-and-a-half-mile loop with the Blue Ridge Trail at trailhead number two. Our trail crew finished it and then marked it with quarter-mile emergency reference markers. Usage has been high based on the trail traffic that I see out there. Pine Top planned two short connectors from the Mount Meta Recreation Complex to the Hitching Post Trail. Trax was able to build these in November. One of them is east of the bathrooms, and the other is at the north end with a pedestrian bridge. Both trails have bike rollovers in the existing fence. And that, I guess upon the, that is the lumberjack trail. I forgot that I have had something even stroked. Anyway, so in this trail, the bottom part is a lumberjack we constructed, and the upper part is a Blue Ridge Trail. And so, when you go around this, this gives you your five-and-a-half miles, which is a nice doable bike to do, or bike. There's a lot of mountain bikes that run this also. So, it's getting, you can tell by the tracks, it's getting a lot of use. Now, I'm going to jump over to Chipmunk. Up, there we go. On the, the Chipmunk Connector Trail, this goes from marker 818, includes a badly eroded section of logging road. Trax has mapped a two-and-a-quarter-mile reroute, which the Eastern, Eastern Arizona Trails Collaborative has approved, and we are now waiting for service review. You guys probably aren't familiar with it that much, but let me just say, it's pretty rough. And so, we have got approval to get this done. We just, Forest Service got their issues, which we'll get through. Near Cholo, next one, this is not going to show up that well, but I'll talk it through. Near Cholo, the Buena Vista Trail System, which is a US-60 and a 300 road, is in the final stage of Forest Service approval. Though we lost some mileage due to the private land transfer, new trails and scenic viewpoints have been added. And so, in this, you can see in the upper right-hand quadrant, that was the land transfer. And that's where we lost the original Buena Vista system. Jason Moore's been instrumental, will save the Buena Vista Trail System to engineer some new trails, and it's going to be a welcome addition. Onwards to, now that's, let's see if we go. Okay, here we go. The Cholo Bike Course continues to develop. They've been working on this a long time. The city funded Big Loop Trails to design a system north of town. And that'd be the lower set is what they did. And then, they got us involved, and then Trax has gone out and made another trail system just north of that to give a total of about 20 miles. So, at this stage, the project's got EATC approval, and we're awaiting Forest Service review. This trail system, in theory, will happen after Buena Vista from the Forest Service. And now, we're going to jump over to Los Burrows, which is north and east of here. There's a steep eroded section known as Collarbone Drop, and it's become very difficult to maintain. We looked at this, and it's known for collarbone, for the broken collarbones of people trying to ride this with a mountain bike over it. It's, we wrote it out last August, and we went out and fixed it. Then they had, the tour went over it again, and then they had a horse event to go through there as well. The, when I walked out there the last time, the silt was literally ankle-deep, and it was hard to stand up. It's a, it's a pretty bad area. We have mapped out a quarter-mile reroute, which would be straight to the east, and we're going to go through a boulder field. I've contacted a contractor that's Forest-approved, and we went out there in December, and he looked at it and says, oh yeah, I can do this. So, this is not going to take a whole lot of money. Trax has got the money to fund this, and we should see the Eastern Arizona Trails Collaborative approve this in May. Let's see. Ah, now we're going to Los Cabos. Los Cabos Trail is west of Cholo. It's sixteen-and-a-half miles long, very scenic, but underused. It's with erosion, rocks, steep climbs. It's got a horrible reputation. Jay Brimhall of the City of Cholo was instrumental to help us with Cholo City funding, and together we hired Big Loop Trails from Dolores to design a new trail system. So, they came down, took a look at it, and spent two-and-a-half weeks mapping out a new system. This new system is 21.7 miles long, includes a second trailhead where Los Cabos crosses Joe Tank Road. Will have several shorter loop options of three to six miles. The new plan also improves access to Chihuahua Pines, which connects the Buena Vista Trail System, creating a continuous network from Los Cabos to Buena Vista. Are there any questions?
Question on that. Which one is the one, the new trail? Which color? Or is, is it indicated on there?
Well, let's see. Oh, I can see this one over here. I'm having trouble focusing on it. So, the blue is the new trail.
Okay.
And the black would be the original.
Yeah, okay.
And on this one that I can see, on the right-hand side, just for reference, Torion subdivision is on the right, and then in the upper right, Bison Ridge subdivision is there. Just to give you an idea of where it is. And since I, with your trailhead, the first trailhead, which is the top right, and if you go, actually, I'll, I'll point this exactly back. So, the original trailhead is right here. So, this is Bison Ridge, and this is Torion. And if you're going counterclockwise, it's really rough to get started, and Sean Gray has laid it out. Anyway, he has followed the ridge lines through here.
Steve, you need to come back, so everybody, you need to come back, so we pick you up on the recording, please.
It's just hard for me to see it. I'm going from memory and pointing with it. But anyway, when Sean laid the thing out, he's following the ridge lines, and so he's looking to basically stay under a 5% grade with no more than 10. And that's why the mileage got increased so much. There's a beautiful mesa that he was able to get to that without a lot of climbing. And then, at the bottom right, there's another section there, will be nice, we'll call them roly-poly rocks. It's very hard going up the hill, and it's very hard going down, and he's eliminated all of that. In fact, there's potential for another trailhead off Highway 300. And on the, as it goes to Chihuahua Pines, the original one, he was about a half mile just straight down, and he has come around the hillside and picked it up at the bottom. So, we've avoided that area as well. I'm pretty excited about it. It's going to take a lot of money to get this thing going. I'm thinking it's going to take $250,000, $300,000. This is a mega project, and I know the Forest Service thinks I'm nuts, but I wanted to get something. You, you got to start the process. The route, the way it works is you get your design, and then once the Forest Service goes, then you start raising money. It's going to take a lot of money, I realize that, but I'm very confident we can raise some money. It's just getting it done in my lifetime is where I'm at on that. That's important for all people.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you do in Trax, certainly.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to leave the remote up here.
Okay. Are there any questions for Steve? I too appreciate your passion for all of this. I know how much time you put into it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. For being here tonight. Okay, item D4 is a public hearing, discussion and consideration of ordinance number 25-482, amending Town Code Chapter 12, excuse me, Title 12, Chapter 12.12 by adding Section 12.12.070 inflatable play structures, and adjusting the numbering of all succeeding sessions. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Sounds like you guys have done this one once, a couple of weeks ago. However, I think I'll point out a few things, and then we can discuss any of your guys' concerns. First off, we removed the inflatable movie screens. I think the risk is worth keeping those in. I don't think that we have as much risk as we do with the plate structures themselves. Second thing, I think that we need to recap on why we're even here. So, how this works is when in any Little League softball, anybody comes to town, wants to do an event, they have to go through a process and get permits and all this. However, whenever they want to add any plate structures in, we then have to go battle back and forth with our insurance company. And over the last four or five years, we have not been successful with any inflatable structure at all. Some of them were, some of them, they're asking every bit of $25 million of liability coverage. Well, there's just nobody out there even offering that. The problem that we run into is, heaven forbid, something were to happen at the limits that we're accepting. Anything happens to a young kid, everything that's paid out by their insurance coverage, and then ours comes in, and ours starts covering that. Well, we're at a point now that some of these incidents have been very costly. Some of the ones down in the valley have hit 100 million and even more. And I won't get into the specifics on all those, those accidents, but the intention here is, is that we're at a crossroads where the town staff is having to go back and forth with, with our insurance, and wasting valuable time on something that we cannot do anymore. That's the reason that we're putting this forth, and I, I know that we made some corrections to it to make more sense. The reason we picked inflatables was because that's how the insurance company names it. So, coming back and adding the plate structures, I don't see an issue with that. It more defines what we're trying to, trying to accomplish, and I think it resolves all of what you guys were concerned about. We were just copying what the insurance companies, that's how they, that's how they define them, is just inflatable. So, they don't define them any farther than that. So, I, I hope that this helps clean that up for you guys.
I do appreciate the work that you put into that, because I know there was a concern, council, Vice Mayor, about the inflatable kayaks and paddleboards. So, this, clearly, those would not be.
Right. And it's not like we're going out there, we're, we're not enforcing this. We're not going to chase people down if they've got inflatables. What this all comes down to is when there's special events, and there's liability that has to be on both sides, we can no longer support that, and there's no point in us having those battles back and forth. We have to get with their insurance company, we have to get with our insurance company, and for the last at least four or five years, it has not been successful. So...
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Matt tonight? This is a public hearing, so if any member of the public would like to, to address this issue, now would be the time. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on then. Are there any, any other concerns from the council? No? Then I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve ordinance number 25-482, adopting an amendment to Town Code Title 12, Chapter 12.12, Town Parks, by adding Section 12.12.070, which prohibits the use of inflatable play structures in town parks, recreational facilities, and town-owned rights-of-way, and adjusting the numbering of all succeeding sections of Chapter 12.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, as a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt. We appreciate your work on that. We'll move on then to item D5, which is again a public hearing, discussion and consideration of ordinance number 25-43, approving zone change, Z92, a zoning amendment from Arlo to R12 for the zoning map of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a zoning amendment to clear up one of our skeletons that we have in the closet. And I can't, I can't identify why this occurred, but I have some assumptions. But basically, I think that it came from the time when the county was not letting us review before Keith pointed out to them that, you know, that could make some people very unhappy. For instance, a gentleman came to me and said, "Hey, I would like to build a garage." And I'm, so I'm doing the cursory view, and I had to inform him that, "Sorry, you can't do that, because not only can you not build a garage, you should have been able to build a home, because you don't meet the development standards for your zone." So, and then looking in that area around his home, there was nine other lots with the same issue. So, the town's acting as an applicant for this, and the request is to change it from Arlo to R12. All of the properties in question at least meet the half-acre minimums. And so, this would, if council chooses to approve it, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to approve it back in February, it would allow issuance of building permits and bring them out of the legal non-conforming status that they currently have. And that's kind of a question mark if that's actually there, but it would legalize the zoning and, and clear up some of that issues that we're having with zoning in this area. And there's, there actually is another one in the works similar to this that'll be coming forward within the next month that's basically identical.
Jeremiah, appreciate that. Are there any questions for Jeremiah on this? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's any member of the public that would like to address this, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion. Counselor Heisler?
I move to adopt ordinance number 25-483, approving zone change, Z92, a zoning amendment from Arlo to R12, single-family residential zoning district, 20,000 square feet per dwelling unit for the zoning map of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, amending the zoning for 6.3 acres for the following APNs, 311-50025B, 311-50025C, 311-50025D, 311-50025E, 311-50026A, 311-50026B, 311-50026C, 311-50026D, 311-50085, and 311-50086.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. That concludes our business tonight, so thank you, everybody, for coming, and we are adjourned.